Started all open with a prayer and will stand up for the faith. Lord, be with those families who've lost loved ones in the recent storms. We just lift them up to you, Lord, as you give them peace and comfort. So much devastation that we see on the news and, and, uh, Lord, it's just heartbreaking to, to know that families are suffering right now. And we just ask again that you bring in peace and comfort and, uh, in their lives be restored as quickly as possible. Lord, thank you for the first responders and those who have been fighting, fighting the fires here in our county and surrounding counties. And Lord, those that are cleaning up after all the disaster that we've witnessed. So, Lord, we just ask for your, uh, your, 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 your peace in that as well. And, and just very grateful for those individuals. And Lord, as we take up our meeting this morning, uh, Lord, let us be mindful of the decisions we make, how they impact our coworkers and their families, Lord, and, and our friends and neighbors here in, in the community that we've been given the privilege to, uh, to serve. So, Lord, again, just, just give us that wisdom and guidance that, that we need and, and show us what grace really, really looks like. Lord, uh, just as we continue here, we just want to be mindful that everything we would do and say would bring honor and glory to your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Good morning. Thanks for being here. All right, we have minutes for, uh, March sixth and eleventh. I'll give you a minute to review those, and if you have already, then I'd entertain a motion to approve. Make a motion for the March eleventh minutes to be approved as written.
I'll second it.
You have a motion second to approve. You said sixth and eleventh, Joe?
I said eleventh. I weren't here on the sixth, so I don't know. All I can do is just go by what's written.
Okay, so I have a motion.
For the sixth.
So you'll do that.
Okay, so, uh, I had a motion to approve the eleventh. Any further discussion, seeing none, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Now, let's go back to March sixth. I would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the March sixth.
I'll second that. Any further discussion, seeing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have, uh, Nebo Fowton Fire Department. Um, and this is in reference to a trailer that we're decommissioning that, uh, they've expressed an interest in. And, and I think we've discussed it and we believe it would be a, a good fit, a good home for it and would be put to use in a part of the county that, uh, that serves even part of the, like, national force over there. So with that, uh, I would entertain any discussion, uh, and if there's any, uh, and I know we have, uh, the fire chief and a board member here. So if you gentlemen want to comment on this anyway before we, before we make a decision, uh, I'll give you that opportunity.
No, we do appreciate it and, uh, I think it'll be a vital asset to that end of the county, especially when we're, have a lack of repeaters as we had during that storm. Our repeater is down because of lack of power. So it would benefit us to have a, a place where we could fire up radio communications and do a joint command. It was, uh, Philip Pitts was, let me remember, was a great asset in his vehicle that he has multiple radios in. And we did a joint command and it would benefit us if we would have had something like that, but we didn't at the time, so.
And we had received a letter, um, Doug, from you expressing your interest and you have the support of the, of the elected board there, it appears. So, uh, gentlemen, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to, uh, make?
I don't believe that I do. I mean, I, like I said, I, we've already discussed that and we feel that is a good fit for that, so, okay? I'm agreeable of it.
Okay. And I'd like to thank, uh, OEM Randy Rowe. I know Randy, uh, been instrumental in that, uh, somewhat, uh, reluctant to give it up, but I think he also appreciates the fact that where it's going and it's good home and so, uh, Randy.
I appreciate the mutual aid agreements that we have with Nebo. So Doug has assured me that it could be throughout any part of the county or the region if it's called well. And that's, that's a great thing.
Okay. All right, and we have a, uh, we have a list of equipment that went with it. I think we had just a few items in there that are, that are remaining. I think there was two or three radios and some, some equipment. So we're, uh, you're the new beneficiary of that as well, okay? So hopefully that will, that will help you. So at this time, uh, we have a bill of sale agreement, um, upon execution of the title transfer. Nebo Fowton Fire Department agrees that they have current insurance coverage for the purchased trailer. The trailer is donated to Nebo Fowton in an as-is condition. And I'll pass that down for you guys to look at and then I would entertain, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to donate the trailer as is.
To approve the bill of sale and agreement.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion second to, uh, do the title transfer to, uh, Nebo Fowton Fire Department. Any further discussion, seeing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Do we?
I'll need you to initial those.
I'm sure if you want to send that or not on that one.
You bet. Always, Joe.
You bet.
So if you guys can make sure that. Did we take the license plate off of that?
We have not yet.
Okay. Would you, Doug or Randy care to do that? Are you gonna take it out here today?
I brought my.
Okay. Okay, well, that would be, that would give us time to take that off then.
If it's not.
Okay. Right, thank, thank you. We, we do appreciate you guys down there.
Thank you, sir. You bet. Thank you.
Doug has been more involved in this than me.
Right. Doug wants to come on up and will.
He wants different chairs.
Yeah.
These are not friendly.
We, we appreciate what you do down there.
And we appreciate you guys.
Yes, you bet.
Yep. Gentlemen, you're welcome to stay, but, uh, we.
I want to wait till I present, while I'm presenting, I'll be part of that real quick.
Okay. Is it regarding that, Randy, or you want me to come back to you?
The document signed by the governor this morning at four thirty a.m. on the storm damages.
Okay, I, I heard that Le Cleve County was part of that. Okay.
Can I jump ahead of you? Just, I'm going to be one minute, I promise you.
Okay.
Well, I don't promise that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we know better than that one minute thing.
I don't promise that. But my intentions are one minute. So basically, what you have there is, uh, a path of the debris field. You'll see it skipped over a couple of counties, but that's basically where Hittar County at. And, uh, Governor Keehost did a fantastic job of getting this done in four days, which is a record as far as, as far as I know forever. So we start the, the official PDAs on Thursday and the PDA teams will probably do Le Cleve, uh, maybe Friday. I'd like for you to be part of that if you could. Yes. Uh, and, uh, there were thirteen tornadoes confirmed and you've got the information on those. So basically what happens is we do the PDAs and this is for IA, this is for individual. And you need to know that the, uh, the people in your districts need to tell them that, you know, the, the new FEMA rules are different than the old FEMA rules. Typically, in, from here past, the first question that's asked of the property owner is, do you have insurance that covers this? Okay? And if they say yes, then FEMA and the local PDA team move on to another property. So now they don't ask that question, which is a good thing. So we're hoping that we have a, you know, have enough to stay in the program with it. But as of right now, we, I did get Le Cleve entered into that program. And we do have, uh, uh, verified nineteen properties that are affected.
Oh, so you already have those identified?
Yes. Okay. Yes. Between Doug and I, we have nineteen that are affected.
Do the property owners know that they are in this system?
They do not. This came out this morning at five a.m. So when we go back to them after Thursday, you know, it could be Friday, and I think it's probably gonna be Saturday or Sunday, but when we go back to them, we're telling them we're here for this reason. Okay? And, uh, again, in the old days, the very first question that was asked is, do you have insurance? Now, that is not one of the questions. So even those that are highly insured, you know, might be, uh, might be, uh, in the program to get their deductibles or something like that, okay? You know, and road damages. And then in two weeks, gonna start the public portion of it, which would be the roads and the bridges and all that.
What's our meet?
One ninety-five is our meet on PA, public. But on the other one, on the new system, it's five hundred homes in the state.
Okay, I was gonna say what you're now.
And if you'll read the document, we're way over that at this time. So it's a good thing.
Those nineteen properties, are they kind of down there in the corner where most of the damage?
They're down there on Bass and Auburn and Audrian, that area in thirty-two. They're all in about a two and a half mile area.
All right. If anybody down there comes to my store, prising me, um, is there a number that they can call to see if their property is on the list? Or, and if not, can they get on the list?
That number would be my number, probably.
That's you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know there are, sorry, I interject. No, there's more properties than nineteen.
I would imagine so.
Yeah. Nineteen was, uh, that meets the criteria on major damage on the houses.
Right. I think there's, there's some people down on Walnut and Clay Road down in there that, that they have damage, but if they didn't report it. Yeah, I was running around yesterday. I observed some other properties that I need to get the addresses to.
I did too. And, and that's not preliminary, that's nineteen that we can park at this time.
So there may be a few more is what you're saying? Will it come up? Correct.
And there's some that didn't, you know, that night didn't call in or say anything, uh, when I was going around with, uh, National Weather Service and, uh, the paper. We found some more that, that didn't say anything.
Try to grab an address on those if you can.
I will.
I might already have it, but try to grab it.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll make sure they're not let down.
Right.
And, uh, so that's kind of where we're at on the damage. And we still do not have a confirmed touchdown, although, uh, Doug maybe said with National Weather Service Lead Meteorologist last evening. And, uh, then he called me early this morning and said, "It's looking more like we did have a touchdown." And, uh, and I have a good witness that saw two funnels out in that area, a good witness. He's been to every storm spotter school and, and now his title, I think, is Fire Chief, has been for a while, Fire Chief of Nebo Fowton. So he actually saw two funnels and that was instrumental in the investigation. So I'm way over your two minutes, I'm sorry. Okay? So any questions about that?
None on my part.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay. Charlotte, I gave you a referral yesterday.
He goes to next to me.
On a well, uh, that might have been cross-contaminated. Did that guy call you? Do you know? Well, I, I gave him, I gave him an office. You have a property that I've been doing. How you do?
Thank you.
Randy, thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Doug, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I see, right. All right, Charlotte, we, uh, have you next on the wastewater contract agreement with Le Cleve County Health Department. So, um, if you can update us on that, I think, uh, it gets a little, uh, out of mind sometimes, you know? I mean, I've done it once or twice, but it just becomes routine. And I've had to familiarize myself with the program over the last few days. But I think, uh, if, if you want to give, uh, the commission kind of a overview of the, the program, I think might be helpful for, uh, the new commissioners.
Absolutely, it would be helpful to.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, the Le Cleve County Health Department worked with the Le Cleve County Commission several years ago for the need of a wastewater sewage ordinance. And with that ordinance, we would establish an agency who would work with the citizens of the county who would be putting the new wastewater systems or if they had to make major improvements to their systems or if we received complaints. Um, and the county commission, we had hosted public hearings and, and worked on it for quite some time. And then the commission at that time did approve an ordinance and adopted an ordinance. And the Le Cleve County Health Department became the contracting agency for the commission. And so what we do in that aspect is individuals come into the health department. And sometimes it's the homeowner themselves. Um, most often, it's the sewage installer, the, the business that they've selected that's gonna put their system in. That they'll come in, we have an application that has to be filled out, um, have to have drawings of the systems that's gonna go in. Um, know whether or not there were soil tests done, of course, depending upon what kind of system is gonna go in. Once that's done, my, um, lead environmental public health specialist, which is Don Myers, he will review the application and make sure it meets all of the state's requirements as far as property lines and neighbors and, and neighbor lines and things like that. Also, if the system that's going in is an approved system for the results of the soil test. And then if it is, we issue them a permit to go ahead and begin construction or remodification, whatever the case might be. And then we are required to go out before the system is finalized and inspect it and make sure it's been properly installed. And, and then once that happens, um, within the sewage installer gets approval, go ahead and cover it up and starts the procedure utilizing the system. Excuse me. So every year, um, in April, our contract with the commission renews with us being the contracting agency. And with that, it states that there is a one hundred and twenty-five dollar fee, permit fee, that when individuals are gonna make a change to their system or put in a new system, they will pay, uh, that one hundred and twenty-five dollar fee. Um, there is also a, um, a fee in there for the annual registered installers to keep them on our registered list that we provide to individuals. I believe it's a hundred dollars for the year and that's also included. Um, so when we, um, get permit requests, we, of course, utilize all of those permit fees to operate the program during the year. At the end of the year, when we're submitting the, the invoice to the county, if it doesn't, if, if the permit fees that we've collected does not cover the expenses of the program, then we have been submitting an invoice to the county. And, uh, every year, it's a little different. We never know based upon the, the work that's been done throughout the year. Of course, some years, we don't do a lot of work with the sewage program. Um, obviously, it's kind of based upon, um, the economy and new builds and, and things along that line. Um, but if the, um, uh, collection of the permits does not take care of the expenses, then we do submit an invoice to the county and, and they have been, um, good about trying to cover those additional costs. Um, so I know that, um, the last few years, that cost has been going up. Um, I think in twenty-two and twenty-three, we were a little over three thousand, I believe, that was, that was unfunded. This last year, it was over five thousand and that was unfunded. And so obviously, um, costs around the program are going up. And I know the commission maybe wanted to discuss about increasing the permit fees. Um, so I tried to provide, uh, Linda through some email. I contacted some of our neighboring counties, some of the other counties in region I to see what fees they were collecting. Um, some were right where we are. There were some others that were cheaper in their fees. Um, but I don't think they have a program where they do as many sewage permits as what we did. Um, as an example, Dallas County just recently increased their permits because they were in our same situation. The permit fees collected weren't covering the cost of the program. Uh, so they just did that. Also, um, Phelps Marys County and Kualaski County, um, just rescinded their ordinance. Uh, again, for these same, same issues, the cost of the program just to continue to go up. And so they rescinded, uh, and so what happens in that situation is then the inspection and permitting and authority goes back to the state, goes back to Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. Now, it's my understanding the local health department still has to respond to complaints. So if a neighbor calls and says, "My neighbor's sewage is running over on me," we would still be required as the local health department to go out and inspect that or take a look at it, but then we would turn it over to the state. And then the state comes in and handles all of the permitting and inspecting.
That could slow things down.
Pardon?
I said, I think that could slow things down.
It, it can because, well, you all probably know the state's not always the fastest, you know? Obviously, with your county, uh, doing it, we get things done a lot quicker. But, um, it, you know, it just, it all goes back to cost. And like I said, those counties just felt, um, it was too great of an expense to, to keep doing it. So they let the state have it that.
What are the costs comprised of?
So, um, it's staff time for my staff to go out and do, uh, all of the inspecting. We have some supply cost, um, uh, printing of the applications that, that has to be done. Um, obviously mileage, uh, going out wherever we need to go. So, um, you've got your personnel, your mileage, your supplies to run the program, um, is, is basically the cost that we have. Every now and then, something odd might come up that we maybe have to have a piece of equipment. Um, one, one year, we had to buy a, um, set of the, I call them the survey transit, I think, uh, type of, of equipment. So sometimes there are some equipment costs that come into play.
Whenever, is Donnie the one doing most of the inspections?
He is, he is. I do have another environmental public health specialist, Shelby Hall. She's only been with me a little over a year. Um, she's been out with Donnie to look at sewage inspections and then through, through some training. But right now, Donnie is my main, main one because of the years he's been doing that.
So whenever Donnie goes out on one of these, he punches a clock on that job and layering back?
Yes, yeah, on our, we, we, you know, utilize timesheets. And, and so each day, at the end of the day, we have to calculate what we worked on throughout the day. And so the sewage work is part of our line items on the timesheets.
You said that you called a few other counties.
Yeah.
I, I, and some of them don't even do it. They're turning it over to the state.
Correct, yeah.
Um, the ones, what would be helpful for me is, um, you know, if we could have potentially a pile of class three counties and average, just, I mean, I saw some, okay?
Sure.
But I'm a little curious, um, maybe what an average might be for the ones that do participate in something similar to what we're doing here.
So let me try and get that.
Okay.
No, I'll try and get that. Because that's our question here.
I'm Eric Lynch.
I'm sorry, I missed the answer. Yeah, I can, I can see where that would be helpful. I get, when, when I knew you all would be discussing it, I told them, I said, "Let me try to see what some of our neighboring counties do. We're part of region I, I'll see what they do." But I could see throughout the state, what are other counties that are, are just like us, what are they doing?
Eric, I'd like to, uh, speak to your request, if you may.
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, Charlotte, I appreciate the update. Um, can I ask you a couple of questions and then I'd like to respond to Eric? Uh, is it three, three or five acres? I wasn't able to find our original ordinance.
I believe it is. That's a good question. I believe, because at one point, we were talking about five. I don't know that we ever put that in the ordinance. Randy, I still think it's three.
Okay.
Um, but I can confirm that. I know we were talking about five at one point.
Yeah, and, and I, and we, we have not been successful in finding a copy of that ordinance. I think it goes back to two thousand and two, though, possibly. And, um, so if you have that, uh, I think the commission, myself for sure, I think the commission would, would like to copy that. Uh, and then I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the rates have remained unchanged since that original twenty, twenties, twenty-three years ago, roughly. Okay? And then I'd like to respond to your, uh, request, Eric. So, um, there's, there's three options that, and, and Charlotte's mentioned, I think, two of those, but, but there's three options available for us as a commission. Uh, and this is the very best option, okay? Uh, if we do turn it over to the state, then they do all of the inspections and they have to inspect daycare, lodging, and I think they have five people statewide to, uh, to do that. So that would, I think, be a disservice to those in Le Cleve County from a, from a time limit standpoint. And so, uh, I wouldn't recommend that one at all. There's another option where the county can contract with the state, uh, and then the state will give us, uh, I'm gonna say a quasi-permit, and then we issue the, the permit, Wester County does, does this. It didn't sound, sound like kind of a hybrid option, and I don't know why that would be any advantage at all. But truly, we have the best option here with, uh, with, with the health department because I think it would best serve the needs and interests of Le Cleve County. So with that, uh, then I would say the issue for me would be, do we want to reevaluate the rates, knowing that there hasn't been any change since two thousand and two? And the relevance of other third-class counties, because what I've already heard was this could vary year to year depending on the economy. So, so we, we poll other counties, but that might be, this county isn't experiencing any growth, maybe this one is. And so knowing that we have to, uh, or should renew this in the not-too-distant future, I, I'm not sure, I would ask anybody myself, but respecting your, uh, question, I, I'm not sure that that's as relevant to me as it is to if we wanna have a discussion about the, about the rates.
Well, my question about the average rates was, I wasn't wanting to get too far away from something.
I, I think we, we distributed a copy of that.
Another thing that would be helpful for me is, um, maybe a snapshot of the last five years. How many permits? Because talking about whether Leclae County might be down or...
Could we get that just based on budget? And Charlotte doesn't need to, need to do, Charlotte, we, we can...
She's got that, too.
We'll get that from your invoices.
Yeah.
Should be able to, yeah. She should be able to retrieve that. See, I don't see how we would get too far out of round, you know, when you've got Dallas County doing that, you've got these others dropping from here, when our rate was actually right in tow with everything to start with, and we're twenty years behind.
Charlotte, when does this contract renew?
April first is when, is when the contracting...
So would, would the rates need to be determined prior to that? Do you write that in the contract or are the rates even stipulated in the contract?
The document that we signed, they are, they are in there.
Okay.
However, and Linda, you may be able to speak more obviously than I can. If we, if we kept it as is, because April first is coming up pretty quickly, can we amend that? Even though the document is for a year, could it be amended if we decide to change something?
We can change your document to say a statement of potential amendment.
Okay.
You know, put in there that commission is reviewing and it may be revisited and that. So to add that to your statement.
I'm seeing reason why we shouldn't be able to, you know? Let's look at that. I'd like to see that original deal, if you could come up with that. But I, I think that we can have that done prior to April one. I don't see whether there's any real need to finding out what rates we're gonna do.
Prior to the twentieth of March or prior to? Because she renews April first and the meeting is the twentieth. Your meeting is the twentieth, right, this week?
Uh, it's Thursday. Yeah, it's this Thursday.
So it's either Thursday for April first or it's later.
Because of your all's board meeting and stuff like that, you're saying, even though that does not go until April first.
Yeah, so what my board would do is, if they would review the document and then we usually, when they approve it, they sign off on it and then I send it to Linda for you all.
Sure, yeah, I, I get that, understand that. Just trying to figure, and that's kind of where I was thinking, so much that same exact thing. Yeah. If we can, I mean, if it pleases the rest of the commission, I would like to go ahead and see if we can't come up with an amount now. And that fell right in line with where I was thinking. I don't know where Mr. Eastern is there, but yes, sir. That's what I think that we should do. And go from there.
I'm all right with that for now.
And I would like...
For a year?
Yeah, for a year. So I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and raise our basic rates up by twenty-five dollars to one fifty and our advance by fifty dollars to two fifty. At this time for a yearly deal.
I'll second that.
Okay. You have a motion second to renew, well, we have one part of the motion to
raise our rates.
Yeah, for the wastewater agreement with the health department from one twenty-five to one fifty and the advance from two hundred to two fifty. And that will allow the health department to get their contract or take it, Charlotte, take it to her board. They approve it or if they want to rewrite the contract, I'm assuming you have that option as well, like just saying, "Guys, we don't want to do it. So that's not our, that's not our decision." I had a motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. So Charlotte, we recommend by our vote that the rates for basic be increased to one fifty and the advance to two fifty. So if you'd please take that to your board. And then if you'll get that to us, we could get that back possibly on next week's agenda. So we can get that done before the renewal date.
Absolutely. I, I will get the original ordinance sent over to you via email today, if that's okay. And we will get this document ready. I will not physically get my board meeting this week. I have chemo tomorrow. But I'll be doing it, my conference call, but I will have all the paperwork ready for them to review and sign. And we'll get it over to you for your meeting, but next, before next week. Okay?
Charlotte, thanks, thank you.
Yes, and I was just going to say, if you ever have any questions, you know, about this program or, or anything else, we live in a department, you know, we'll always be willing to come up and talk to you.
You bet.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michelle. Have a good day. You bet. And we met before, of course.
Yes, I remember, yes, thanks. Thank you. Good to see you.
Can we take just a brief second to get out and answer?
Yeah.
Do it real quick.
Yeah.
I don't know why I was thinking, I think, four acres to, but I think it's four acres or more and you don't have to have it. So it might have been three.
I remember something about five point one.
Well, that's state.
State?
The state has a difference, I think, in what maybe we, at that time, than what we do. Did you find it?
I haven't read this. I printed it off this morning.
Because if I remember, I do.
If you want to jot down that CSR number there, Eric, you can, you can Google that and that's what's in the, that's the state guidelines there.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is the senior tax freeze applications as we continue to work through those. Looks like we'll take those up on a weekly basis. So we have sixty-four additional applications that have been reviewed, waiting for commission approval.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and accept the sixty-four that was stated for three eighteen at twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
And motion second to prove senior tax freeze applications as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, in favor, say aye.
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 Turn that one upside down, too.
Just there, once and all.
You bet.
Okay. We do, we did have, we have four that will need to be reviewed for, to make sure they fit the guidelines. And so what I've asked Mike to do is continue to gather those as they come in. And then probably in about three to four weeks, we'll look at those and we'll have to make a decision whether or not those conform to the guidelines. But I prefer to do those as a group and not one, one by one because we may encounter similar...
Correct.
Situations.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are the ones that maybe are out of tolerance somewhat being notified to see if we can get them?
Not, not at this point, Eric. What, what it would be, would be more research on our part.
Okay.
And also to give them the opportunity to see if anything changes in their world before the May thirtieth deadline.
Yeah.
And that might be, an example might be where someone's lost a spouse. Both are eligible, but perhaps the spouse was not on the warranty deed. Okay? But then does that change between now and May thirtieth? And then also, we have to take into consideration the language in the, in the statute that says equitable interest. So if the spouse wasn't on the warranty deed, but maybe if they provided a marriage certificate or whatever, would we, would we consider that, that they had an equitable interest? But, but from a, from a technical review at this point, those are being held for us to do some further research.
Held with no notification given to...
Right, there's, there's, there's no, no reason to notify them at this point until we do a little more research. And then we will always notify, and I personally did last year, every application that did not qualify. I personally notified those individuals with the reasoning as to why we, we put...
And when are you thinking about taking that up?
I think, Eric, if we, if we hold those for another three to four weeks, because it could be something very similar, we'll, we'll come in and...
So there will at least be a month between the time that they're potentially notified and the deadline?
Not, not, not necessarily.
They don't tell you in the year as far as their taxes stuff goes. They will be notified in sufficient manner prior to thinking, "Well, I'm gonna get a break." You know, because the thirtieth is the end date anyhow.
They will be notified prior to the deadline, after this body makes that decision.
Okay.
And if there's additional information that we feel like would benefit the applicant, then we're gonna call them and give them that opportunity to respond, okay?
But more than a seven days to respond?
I don't know whether it'd be seven days or, because one, one could come in May twenty-fifth, so I, I...
I got you.
I, I can't answer that. But, but respectfully, we will give them, I think, as much notice as warrants based upon the individual application.
Okay.
Some of them, after we look at, we just may simply say, "No, that doesn't fit the, fit the guidelines. There's no additional information needed." I did not review those this morning, Eric. I just asked Mike to hold those because I didn't put them on the agenda for discussion. And that discussion can take time, yeah. It, it, it did last year. And then the three commissioners last year, we each looked at those and we would make our own decision on that. And then we would reach a consensus, "Yes, that one's approved. No, that one's not." If it's approved, here's why. And if it wasn't, here's, here's why it was rejected. And then at that point, the applicant was notified that, that it just didn't fit. And, and I've had two phone calls lately where I cannot approve their application at the, at this point.
Okay.
One of them hasn't submitted an application yet, by the way. Yeah, but based upon the conversation and the statutes and the consistency, and that's one thing I look at, is we, we, we've been tasked to implement this. We've, we started that process last year. So unless the, unless the legislature changes the, the program or the statutes, which, which they did with the elimination of the social security requirement being the most noticeable one, then in, in, in my conscience, if I'm gonna be wrong, I'm gonna be consistently wrong. I do not want to say this one's approved and this one's not and the circumstances look identical. So having the ability to lean back into last year and say, "Okay, how were those considered last year?" And, and, and I'm gonna give you an example because this one may, may come back. So there was a application last year that we received that had real property. They paid real estate taxes. They lived in a camper. Okay? And there was discussion whether that or not that was real property because I think most of those vehicles are, those maybe are taxes, personal property and not as real estate. So that's an example of something that might come up. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, if that application comes back, I'm gonna lean into what we did last year because I don't want to be consistent. The statutes didn't change on that, so it was up to this body to decide whether or not that would be, whether or not it would be allowable under our ordinance. And I'm always gonna be as liberal as I can to offer that to the, to the applicant.
Hello, Ms. Bliss. It's good to see you in Leclae County today.
Right, I forgot about that.
You're always welcome. You want to come in? Oh, I thought you said B...
That's what I thought.
My stomach ripped the ground.
Pick on how you're making the bacon.
And, and fresh tomatoes.
Oh, yes. Heavy on the mayo.
Well, you're here, we're here.
I have an appointment with Frederick at nine thirty, so I've got fifteen minutes.
Okay, it's yours?
Yeah.
So, hey, would you, sir?
Yep, absolutely.
How are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
See, I taught this one the rightest name.
So we will, we will pause our discussion and, and give us, and I'm following that a little bit, but give us an update, Melissa, so what we, what we need to know.
I'm trying to just gather information so I can make a good vote on this. If it were up to me, we wouldn't have those machines anywhere in our community. I personally hate them. But they are legal. And so Representative Hardwick has a bill that would regulate them. So instead of, when you walk in your local gas station, they're right there at your, right when you walk in and everybody's smoking and spending their money and all the things, right there. His bill would put them in a separate room. I think there's a cap of six or eight machines, so they, and they would be regulated that way. One of the other groups I talked to is our VFWs because those guys have those machines and it's a good chunk of the funding for VFWs. So I had him, so Jamie Folsom was at the Capitol last week for veterans appreciation. So I connected Jamie to the state rep that's carrying that bill and said, "I need the two of you to have some communication here. Is this gonna hurt my VFWs? Is it gonna help?" Jamie's view is it actually helps them get more money for the VFWs if they're regulated a little better than what they are now. So how does that affect the commission? Do you all have a dog in that fight? Because that's something that was said to me last week, "Where are your commissioners on this?" And I said, "I don't know, but I know those guys, so let me ask them."
I, I think, Melissa, I'm gonna preface my comment by saying how much I appreciate a state rep or an elected official attending one of our meetings and inquiring about our input. Because you know what? We're very willing to give that to you.
I, I am very strategic with where I take a vote and I try really hard. And you know that that's not always easy. You sat in that seat. But I try to gather as much information I can from as many people as it's gonna affect, especially when it's things that aren't in my wheelhouse. This is not in my wheelhouse. I don't like these machines. I'm afraid Dad spent the milk money in these machines.
Okay, so...
But...
I'm not a fan.
So, so from the same perspective, I believe that you hold, like, possibly a moral perspective as to how that impacts our community? I totally agree with you. The analogy would be, I'm opposed to the legalization of recreational marijuana. And until the voters of Missouri or Leclae County have the opportunity to revisit that issue, we have to deal with it. And it looks to me like this would be a similar, similar to that on a much smaller scale. So if it is regulated, that's probably the best path forward. And do no harm to those organizations like the VFW that can, can benefit from that. And then maybe someday that can be revisited and they're not, they're not available. But that's my, that's my two cents work, Melissa, yeah.
That, that's my two cents. You just said it a lot smoother than I would have, but that's how I feel as well.
I'm tracking that, yeah.
I'm tracking that, yeah. I'm pretty much the same way. I like that. I've been, of course, we've got several uh gas station convenience stores, places like that that have those here in our county already. Uh, and like you said, it has been legalized, so that's just what we've gotten. Like Randy said, to touch on his, that's what we're gonna deal with. You know, it's what we have to deal with, cause it is here. Uh, same with the marijuana thing that I'm still opposed to, but anyway. Uh, with that, I like how you said Hardwick has got something going to where you put those in a separate room. Get them away from the front doors. There's certain stations that I used to frequent, but I don't no more. Because I don't like my eyes burning when I walk in. I don't wanna take my grandkids into those stations and see that stuff and, and and even just put it the way that it is, the way people are sitting there that are dressed and how they're acting and, and everything, you know? I don't, I really don't want my grandkids around that. I'll shelter them as best I can on that. Uh, but I do like the deal of getting them out of the doorways, getting them in a separate room. Uh, station I do still frequent a lot, Little Country Store, uh, they've got them. Uh, they've got them in a whole separate room. You've got to go over and it's not even a part of the store that most people even go into. So that part I don't mind, as bad. Uh, so I'm, I'm with you on that a hundred percent. And with Hardwick on that, I'm moving those into a separate, segregating them out.
Now, let me ask a, a follow-up question or two. So in the proposed legislation, is there probably like a permitting or licensing that's gonna be required?
So.
And will that be different from a profit or not-for-profit? Is there uh like a tax, if you will, that uh, uh, an additional fee or is it a one-time?
So the way, the way I understand um from the bill sponsor is that a lot of those decisions come back and are made locally. So they come back to the city council or they come back to commissioners to make some of those decisions. So that's part of it too, is that they've put it back in the local hands to make some of these decisions. He's got some hard and fast. They're gonna be in separate rooms. They're gonna be ca- I think he's got some caps in place, spending caps, age caps. Some of those things, but some of the other decisions, and I can send you the exact language. You can read through that yourself too. And get an idea of exactly what he's, what he's doing. Um, but some of that's gonna come back to, to us locally to decide.
So I would, uh, I would appreciate having a copy of that. Uh, because it, it could be that we would have to enact some type of ordinance. And if there's any, any uh taxing uh components to that, it, it could or, or might not look like what we did with the uh, the recreational marijuana. Uh, I appreciate the fact that uh the sponsor's looking out for the, for the local. But much like we're dealing with the Senate Bill one ninety slash senior tax freeze, you know, sometimes uh some clarity in the legislation would be good, and if we have some thoughts after we see that, uh, we would, we would send them back to you.
You bet. I would love that. Um, I'm sending it, I'll send it right now. I'll just text it to Joe, cause I've got Joe's number. And then he can share it with the rest of you, and then any additional thoughts that you have after looking at that, you can send right back to me. Um, we will see this on the floor. I anticipate the week after we come back from break, so next week. Yeah, things either move, move very slow or very fast, never medium pace.
Big wheels or small tires?
That's exactly right. So I'll send that so that, that you've got it. It's House Bill nine seventy.
Okay.
Um, but I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys taking time to, to visit with me. I know it wasn't scheduled. Um, but sometimes I have to take advantage of when I can. I can come back by.
I'd like to come to some of the not-commissioned meetings.
Yep, I can do that.
And then if there's any discussion about sheriff's retirement, that does impact the county budget. So it would be uh a preemptive statement on my part that the commission may have uh, a point of view on that that may not, may or may not be the same as the Sheriff's Association.
Just taking all kinds of good information today. I'll just send you that. I sent you the summary. Um, if you want the full bill. Bless you for that, but the summary will really give you what.
Well, we'll get, I'll get with some of this a little more technical savvy than me and get it pressed over where we email it out to everybody and that way we've all got it. I'm sure Ms. Linda could help him with that or even Ms. Leanna, but yeah, so we'll get that part done.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll swing back. Tell that sweet wife hello. And you, tell that sweet wife and your sweet wife. Thank you.
Okay, so picking back up on the senior tax freeze, did we kinda beat that horse?
Not completely.
Okay.
Um, I would like to see us maybe that last month of April take up what we've got. Um, get the ball rolling on that pile and then potentially weekly beyond that. Just in case there is an opportunity for somebody that we don't want to approve to plead their case or get something changed by the deadline of May thirty.
Okay, let me, let me ask you this, this que- and I, and I agree, and that's when I said, let's wait three or four weeks to uh, to do that, so. Um, I, I think that's very reasonable, but let me ask you this. Um, the, are you wanting like an official appeal process?
Um, no.
Because that, that came up in a conversation I had yesterday and um.
No, but I mean, if we're gonna sit here and make a decision um and say no because of a potential little technicality that they could cure in that window, you know? If they're not on the deed, um, can they get on the deed? I, I, I don't know, cause I don't know what's gonna be presented to me, okay?
Maybe when you start seeing a little help that.
Yeah, and it's in those gold pieces what is asked of you to be in order to be qualified for. So if, if they fill that out and they're not, they should've done their homework to make sure that they was, because the deadline's the deadline. So like Randy said earlier, I mean, you, you said more than seven days, potential, but if they fill it out five days prior.
Let's take the person that uh thought they owned their piece of property and their husband died, and now they find out they're not on the deed.
And I know of one of those that just happened.
And you've got, you already spoke up to, you know, I'm going to be thinking she needs to be able to take advantage.
That's where that equitable interest comes in. If they have shown that they have been involved with the paying of the taxes and that type of stuff, that's where that equitable interest would come in for us to do our homework on.
I don't know what I'm gonna get presented with.
Yeah, and, and I haven't reviewed those.
Yeah.
Uh, last year, we probably had maybe a handful that we had to say no to, because, and it wasn't technical issues, it's just.
Flat out wrong?
It was just, it didn't fit the, the statutes, you know? Because if it, if it was something that could be cured, we were more than willing to, to do that. Uh, because we, we believed again that the liberal interpretation uh fits the intention of the legislation, which was to provide a senior tax freeze. It wasn't to find a way to penalize them, not to get it. It was to find a way to qualify them, but it has to comply with the, with the statutes.
It sounds like we're all kinda talking the same way.
We, we are, we are, yeah. Okay, moving on. Use tax uh discussion information. I really don't have a lot on that, but I'll open that briefly. Uh, because that's something we need to uh probably do a work study on quickly. It's three weeks from Election Day. I did request a meeting with the chamber yesterday. Uh, so had a, had a discussion in my office yesterday afternoon just regarding uh their uh participation in this. What they need from us is the uh, some uh some information that they can start to uh push out there. Uh, um, so uh we need to look at that uh quickly. And we need to uh, we, we need to uh get what information we want the voters to know. And so a couple of themes that I've, I've come up with, and I would encourage each of you uh as uh creative individuals uh to, to help with this, but uh it is, is to illustrate uh what it looks like when you shop local and those taxes are collected here and they stay here. As opposed to the obvious when that item's purchased online. So uh, working on an illustration for that. Uh, and then also the old dragnet show just the facts, because we are very conscious and aware of what uh our ability to provide information, not advocate, and uh our integrity uh uh keeps us bound to that, so we, we don't wanna push the envelope where we're perceived as advocating for this. But we want to provide the information that the voters can uh make their own decision with. But, but we're, we're, we're three weeks out. With that, uh Friday, uh there's a luncheon. I'll be, I'll be representing the county at that luncheon. I would encourage both of you to be there as well. Uh, but I, but we need one unified message, and I've taken up on myself uh to be that spokesperson for the, for the county. Um, but that's at noon at the Civic Center. I believe they told me it's in the it's in the downstairs Route sixty-six meeting room. Uh, the city and the county will be there to provide information to whoever attends that, that luncheon. It's a Chamber of Business Builders Luncheon, and uh, and that's Friday at noon.
I'll make it to where I can be there. I'd like to start uh getting a little bit more notice on things that are coming up that we need to be attending instead of two or three days out, because that really puts a damper, damper on my schedule, and also puts a damper on me doing what I need to do for the constituents of Leclae County.
Sure, yeah. You, you wear two, two hats there, Joe.
You bet, so. So once again, I will rearrange this schedule again.
Okay.
So I will plan on being there, so.
I have it written down.
Okay.
You are usually a little bit more eloquent than Joe and I, so. Feel free to be the voice of uh. On, on this issue. I, I trust that your wording will be spot on.
Like you said, we're gonna do some review on it and stuff, and we will, we will become united on that, unified for that, I believe.
Okay, is that on it for the use tax? Okay, damn, I'm in general county business. And I've got a couple items to bring up that came in after the uh, the agenda was posted.
Really, other than the storm damage and stuff, you know, that came through. I had another one there this morning. That I'd actually went through over on stage though. One tree, I mean, it carried over, which is, I, good thing it's not highly used. It actually was last night when I got the call. But then there's the guys out working late Friday. Down that Lynchburg area and stuff, and they, yeah, that one there was a pretty bad one. There was, I don't remember, thirteen or eighteen trees on that one road. That's two different roads, is what that one is. I, I don't remember the roads.
Yeah, this, that's the one that uh I saw there.
Mm-hmm. So, but they was out, out and after till about uh, um, six thirty, seven thirty Saturday morning there.
And there's a pile of them out there yesterday and today and all week long, and maybe next week.
It's hard. That's where again, we'd had discussion. It'd been nice to have some of those pictures brought in. Where they could've got put out there for the citizens of Leclae County to understand that they are there to use caution and, you know? They're working for safety and ours as well, so. But other than that, really just re-clean up the normal road stuff that is going on. I met with another gentleman last week on the intersecting road near Normandy and Edison. But I believe we need to actually meet with him and also a owner on the other side of the road as well, on some things to do there. I visited with Mike on this morning. Got notes for Leanna and then uh got another one to meet with this afternoon on some other stuff. And where we'd also had, I don't know if I've got that as a picture or if I could go back into a text, but something to visit with a grader on. He was actually in a private driveway. So that owner called me with complaint that he had a crown in his driveway and now he no longer has a crown in his driveway. So I'll visit with that this afternoon and then have to get back where we are with that. I gotta meet with him around one o'clock.
Other than that, I'm uh. Can you get on that?
Well, and we can, we can circle back around in case something else pops up. So yesterday afternoon, I was contacted by Patty Burns from the Phillipsburg Community Development Council with a request. I told her I would present it to the commission this morning. And they're having a uh, they are having like a, a, I'm gonna call it a solid waste pickup day up there. And I believe it intended for the uh Village of Phillipsburg. But she also asked if the commission would consider contributing something funding-wise for the uh disposal of electronics and open it up, because more than likely, there's gonna be individuals from the county that's gonna hear about this and they're gonna take to Phillipsburg and um that may, that may swamp them with their ability to absorb all of those fees that are associated with the, with this type of pickup. I, I will also make a note, I don't know the date, but I hope, hopefully we'll hear that this afternoon. Uh, the solid waste uh District T meetings at one o'clock. And uh Leclae County, uh the last two or three years, we've had a uh, a similar type of event uh in the county. And that's funded through um the grants that the solid waste districts get throughout the state. Um, so uh that's already paid for. Those, uh, there's no county funds directly going to that. Uh, but that will be another opportunity for uh county residents to uh have some of those items uh recycled or, or taken.
Such as?
You know, usually it can be, you know, I've seen them take TVs, I've seen them take tires. So anything you would consider a solid waste. Maybe a mattress, maybe, you know, old furniture. And, and there, and there's limitations on that as well, because when, when that entity contracts it out, they, they receive a contract from solid waste. And so usually they'll do like uh, like Miller County, Camden County, Leclae County. I don't know if they're good in Morgan County, if that's even in our district, but I know Miller, Camden and Leclae. And they'll have one day where they have a solid waste pickup. And so uh, that's coming up, and I'll know more about it after this afternoon's meeting.
They bring the items to a centralized location?
Correct, yeah. And there's some limitation, so you can't take, you know, twenty-four tires
Right.
as an individual. Um, so there's some limitation. They'll usually, of course, bring in the uh, the, the trailers to load them and, and uh take them to where they get them recycled at or whatever they do.
And who funds that?
Uh, it's through um, it's through a, a grant, I believe, from DNR. And it's processed through the solid waste districts throughout the state. I'm not sure how many they, there are, but we're in, in District T. Leclae County's in District T. And so those are fun, those grants are funnelled through the uh solid waste. Also on that, Eric, uh when funds are available, um entities can submit grant applications. So it was probably three years ago or two years ago that Leclae County, us, we submitted an application. three years ago or two years ago that Le Cleve County, us, we submitted an application in, uh, in cooperation with Le Cleve Industries for county residents to be able to recycle over there. And I think we did that two years in a row. One year it was like maybe, uh, like a five thousand dollar grant. Um, and maybe the second year it was five, maybe ten. I don't, I don't remember. But those, but those funds are, uh, like a lot of other funds, they're, uh, drying up. And so, there's, and there's been some court cases as to how that's gonna look going forward. But this year there will be a solid waste pickup somewhere. And I'll know if there's been a location determined. But before is, is this request here. And so I had, uh, respectfully told Patty that I'd bring it before the commission and let her know what our wishes are. She would gladly take two fifty, five hundred, a thousand. I wouldn't recommend that. And I'm not even going to make a recommendation because, um, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I don't, I don't see where we should not do something. Of course, uh, my first instinct, uh, after reading that and stuff was to go, you know, half of what the request is and everything. So I would be in up to the five hundred.
Did they get a grant?
I can't speak to that. They may have some of their own funds that they're using to, uh, help clean up their community. I'm not aware of any grants just through, um, anything that would've come through or from District T, but there could be a lot of grant opportunities out there that, that I wouldn't be aware of.
Yeah. And this is geared towards electronics, it looks like.
That was Patty's request. And then typically they'll, they'll see that. Um, uh, because there's a lot of e-waste still in people's garages and sheds and, and so forth. Now, uh, from my experience, I wanna know in our community, if you wanted to take a flat panel TV over to the Hillcrest Education Center, they'll gladly take those, uh, no, no charge. Uh, but if you wanna take a, an old tube type set, those come with a cost. Usually most of the recyclers from the world I lived in, that would be at least twenty-five dollars to dispose of an old tube type set.
If somebody brings a dumpster here to throw electronics in, then somebody has to pick that dumpster up and take it somewhere. Where does it go?
So, I'll try to answer that with, with, again, from the world that I lived in. And that would be that, uh, in these type of, uh, situations where they have solid waste pickup, they actually load them into trailers and then they'll take them to a recycling center. And then whoever is sponsoring this is probably already have an agreement with someone. We're gonna bring you so much tonnage. We're gonna bring you possibly up to so many tires, you know, whatever that, that might look like. And it'll be capped at this because again, they're just not wanna let us take twenty tires out there.
I'm not opposed to doing anything for Phillipsburg for, to open it up for the rest of the county. I keep thinking about the what we aren't gonna pay for and get the same service, uh, here at some point.
Generally what you'll find historically, there will be more demand for this type of event than what they're able to, uh, to supply. And, and that supply is meaning the, just the tonnage and, and the availability of staff, the availability of the trailers and all that. Uh, and, uh, I haven't heard, I don't know when this event takes place. Um, and I don't know how they'll, uh, communicate that to the general public. So I'm not sure what participation there would be from others. You know, but if you just look at Phillipsburg, but, but if you look at that could spread out, you know, start to come east, uh, west to Conway. Uh, so it would be likely that there'd be some from county residents.
Yeah. This here looks like April twenty-sixth. They're cleaning up on April twenty-sixth.
Okay. Now, my question to our budget officer is if we decide we want to participate, are we gonna take that out of economic development?
That's what we took when we helped with the time.
When we did before. Okay. And I think we do have some funds there paid for.
I like five hundred.
Yeah, that was brought up just for discussion to go ahead and get the discussion going and stuff, so. Yeah, I will stick, I will stick with that as far as that goes if that pieces the rest of the commission. I will, I would like to have a copy of this and then I would like to visit with Ms. Patty a little bit on my own as well. That's what, but I'm still okay with with going up to five hundred. We can take, uh, economic development, you said, is that correct?
Is that in the form of a motion?
We would like that in the form of a motion. Like I said, to start that, that was for discussion, to get the discussion going. So after hearing some discussion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve for five hundred for the Phillipsburg Community Cleanup there for the economic part of that.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion second to approve a five hundred dollar, uh, contribution of economic development funds to help support the, uh, Phillipsburg Community Development Council in their e-cycling efforts. Any further discussion? Seeing now, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign. Motion carried. Joe, I'm sending an email from Patty to commission right now.
Thank you.
So it's on, it's on the way. All right, next item that I have and, and, uh, guys stop me at any time. I've got two or three. So if something jumps in from Eric, from you.
Edited.
Let me, let me, let me know. Uh, I'd received a letter from the Sustainable Ozark Partnership and this is in, uh, and I'll read it. Uh, uh, this is from, uh, Dorsey Newcombe. He's the executive director and, uh, you gentlemen are aware that we are a supporting organization for, uh, SOP and of course, they support the mission of Fort Leonard Wood and our US Army. I'm sharing with you in a closed letter that the Sustainable Ozark Partnership wrote to Senator Hawley, Senator Smith, Congressman Alford, Congressman Smith and Congressman Graves. On behalf of the members of the SOP across the Fort Leonard Wood region, we expressed our appreciation for their continued support of Fort Leonard Wood, the Army, our service members and military families. The purpose of our letter was to convey our concern about the future of the Army to underscore from our view its importance and relevance in our national defense. In our letter, we respectfully requested our members work to ensure that fiscal year twenty-six federal budget contains the necessary resources to increase active Army in strength. We felt like it was important to go on record to support the growth of our nation's Army and wanted to make sure we shared our letter with you. Thank you for your support, SOP. So, I received that from, uh, and that's and I just wanted to present that, uh, yeah, just as a FYI and to, um, know that Le Cleve County and the Le Cleve County Commission supports the efforts of, uh, of that organization and the good that they do for, uh, our Army and their families. Next thing I'd like to do is just, um, uh, get your thoughts on, um, either a work study on this with other things or, uh, an agenda item or possibly an action item now. I don't know if you've received this from, uh, Roden Bridge, but we'd requested at one time I'd mentioned, uh, the, the, uh, possible need to consider the original installation of culverts, uh, and the cost that, uh, the county is carrying on that. Uh, and couple that with the fact that we maintain those after they're installed in perpetuity. Uh, and so I'd ask, or maybe we'd ask, uh, for some numbers. So I've received those this morning. I don't know whether you have or not.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, I would, I would suggest, uh, as part of discussion, if it's not an action item today, but as part of our discussion, that we set a, maybe a two-tier, uh, flat rate fee where we don't get into, uh, this one costs us ten dollars more and that one costs us thirty dollars more.
Right.
But we have a simple structure for that. And, uh, and it's easy to, uh, to, uh, maintain and administrate and it doesn't become a nightmare. So if you've had that information, if you have that in your possession, then I would, I would ask that you pass your thoughts on and then, um, with your recommendation. And then, uh, we'll need to for- formalize that, uh, maybe next Tuesday.
You bet.
So if you want to, uh, pass those back to me after you've, you've deliberated on it. And then we'll, uh, we'll sta- if we establish that as a policy, then we'll establish a, uh, a, a process for that to happen. So it would actually, we'll, we'll draft a, I'm gonna call it a quasi-permit for that, yeah, with, with the, uh, with the amount in there. Okay?
The one twenty-seven fifty? That include the driver?
No, that's just the, that's the material.
Just rock. Okay. Yeah, so that's not in there.
Right.
Okay. See, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you've got estimated fuel cost, you know, don't have anything in there. So that's not the, the, the truck bringing it, going to get in it, bringing it, you know, the man-hours of that part. I mean, I'm assuming these man-hours may be total, but I don't know if that's gonna get the rock and getting back. Is it in that? That's what I'm saying. There's questions for that. Is that in there? Because obviously the one guy can be doing some stuff while the other one's bringing the rock to finish up and get ready for. So I don't know if that's in that total. You know, that's why I've got to resist with the travel of total labor cost in there from there.
So Joe, what I requested was that we ask the Roden Bridge staff to give us an average.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because we can get into, okay, if it's a twenty-foot pipe, thirty-foot pipes, you know, does it need two loads of rock? Are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna add a, a surcharge for a second load? And I wanna keep it as, uh, straightforward, uh, as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And so this is an average of what they believe it takes to install a, uh, twenty-foot pipe out here.
Well, I do believe they have potentially looked over a couple of minor additions to that fuel man-hours on the, on the dump truck there.
It's possible and some might not take this long. You know, again, I, I requested an average of what they thought. And, and then I, then I think the underlying, um, thought for me is that, uh, with, uh, with further development in, in the county, knowing that once we, we have a pipe installed and then we maintain that again forever, then is there a reason we should recoup some of that cost upfront? So as I drive around and, and as you guys drive around, um, we have individuals that we see they're installing a, uh, having utilities installed. Well, the utility company doesn't provide that pole and for free. They ask them for, for a deposit. It, it's part of that individual's, uh, cost of establishing that. Uh, we, this morning, we discussed earlier, we discussed, uh, the fees associated with, uh, with, uh, waste, wastewater, right? So, and then out where I live, there's, you know, there's talk that, you know, there's gonna be another Dollar General out there. Well, that's gonna impact possibly, uh, Normandy out there. So we'd, we'd be subsidizing the, uh, cost of that. Uh, now I don't know if that's the case. So, uh, I don't know if there's truly another Dollar General, uh, coming to Le Cleve County, but, but that's what I hear. So, uh, that's was my reasoning for, uh, bringing this subject up a month or two ago is, is for us to give a consid- consideration. And, and not to be burdensome to, uh, from an administrative standpoint where we, where we say, okay, we're going to have a ticket here that's gonna have mileage and it's gonna have fuel and it's gonna have, it's gonna have two hours on this one and that's gonna be a different price than, than three hours on this. It, it was to establish a, uh, a base there, if you will.
Good median. Right. No, and I agree with that.
And is this average here based on a, probably a twenty-foot culvert?
Okay, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying for the size of approach catches that, that's.
And this does not include the culvert. As you're aware, the, the individual has always, uh, been required to purchase the, uh, the culvert. Okay, so, um, over the course of the week before next week, if we can formalize that so we can, we can get that process rolling. Put out an effective date. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next item, and this was just something that came up a couple of weeks ago and I believe we're having a meeting today. Um, I was, been made aware of it. Um, I did, I did go to a meeting about two weeks ago, but the, uh, City of Lebanon is working on a celebration for America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday. They're calling it, uh, I think in their terms, a two-fifty. Um, I don't know all the, all the details. They, they're gonna have multiple events. Uh, they, they are contracting, I believe, with a pyrotechnics company, which will be probably the only fireworks display between, I'm told, between Fort Leonard Wood and Springfield maybe. Um, uh, and that, um, they are asking the commission to consider some type of, uh, contribution to help with this. This is gonna be a celebration. Um, there will be more details to follow, but I think they're trying to find the location. Not speaking for the city, 'cause I don't, I don't know any of the details. They're having a meeting probably right now as we're speaking. Uh, the fireworks display probably maybe- The fireworks display probably maybe out at the airport a few years ago, I think they have one. There, there's been talk of an airshow, there's been talk of an event downtown. There's been talk of just a whole lot to tie into this.
So this is Fourth of July celebration?
Yes, I was gonna say, I didn't, yeah, it's a celebration for the Fourth of July, that is correct, over the two-fifty, like you said. I did not get, I have not heard, I did hear of it as well. I have not heard the actual dates yet myself. And if I did, I didn't, didn't grasp one of those.
It's July, July fourth, twenty-twenty-six, yeah.
Well, they are doing it, they're wanting to do that on that particular date.
The, the Fourth of July, yeah.
Which is on what day is, is that this year?
So I'm putting that out here as information at this point, as we learn more from them, then I think we should consider a request for that. So more, more to follow. And with that, I think I'm out of words. Ms. Lynda, do you have anything for us?
Do you want this one on this or next time?
Let me do it next time. Lynda just handed me a request for a refund on personal property, but I like to put those on the agenda, so I'll hold that till next week.
Fair enough.
And then it's possible I'll bring back the request next week for the, the request we had for releasing funds out of these surplus land sale. So I'll bring that, possibly bring that, that back next week as well.
So basically what happens with those is if they, she had noticed the change prior to paying it, you would have seen it through a rebatement. But because it's after the payment, now you're seeing it as a refund.
That's what I was wondering. It seemed like we had baitment or something already, maybe, or?
We did monthly baitments last week, yes.
So she had two accounts set up, one under strip and one under?
Apparently, and paying both.
Okay.
And maybe one was through an SPO.
And this was batted through Julie?
That is Julie.
It is Julie's, yeah. We're not doing action today?
No.
We're not doing action today, just yet. And MoDOT bridge inspections and stuff that we're doing tomorrow? Do you have, I'd every write down a time.
Nine.
Nine, where are we meeting them?
Roden Bridge.
At Roden Bridge?
I'm acting like I know a whole lot there.
You sound pretty confident this time.
All right, so we remain in general county business. Is there any, anything else at this point you think of? If not, or until I come back around, public comments, items listed on the agenda, done? Okay, we've taken care of all the routine business, Lynda. Okay, and I'll say public comments regarding as items not listed on the agenda.
How's the surplus option sale setup going? What's the items for that?
We, we went out there last week, got most everything organized, few items that are still coming in. I'm gonna try to get by there again today and finalize what's in there and hopefully get from a couple of other departments and stuff on what they're putting in, so we go and get a sale bill made up. So, yes, sir.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay. I have a motion to enter closed session. Do I have a second?
Second, the motion for closed session.
Yeah, motion second to enter closed session. Any further?